The sun's going down early now, so the lighting's all weird again. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our final town hall meeting for Advocates for Angels. I'm Valerie Aprahanian, the IEP Navigator, and I empower parents to get the IEP Special Education Program. Their child needs to thrive both in school and in life after high school. So lately, I've been talking about how parents can empower themselves to become powerful and sovereign parent advocates for their child by controlling their emotions and their minds and how to move from emotions to advocacy. So I'm going to round off the town hall meetings that I started back in April with this final message to parents, which are basically my best tips on how parents can begin to become powerful parent advocates. So how, parents, how you can be prepared to win the IEP game? Okay, so these are my best tips and how you can begin to do that and begin to win at basically your next IEP meeting if you take this advice and start implementing some of these things to prepare for your next IEP meeting. So this is how you manage your mind and emotions, which should be at the forefront of how you prepare for your meeting. So when you think about how you're going to prepare for your IEP, you're going to want to think about what kind of emotions you're feeling about your IEP. The first thing to do is become self-aware, to become, you know, conscious and self-aware of what are you feeling, what negative emotions are you feeling? Are you feeling stressed? Are you feeling resentment? Are you feeling anger? Are you feeling betrayed? Are you feeling guilt because you don't know what to do and you feel like you should have done something sooner? Are you feeling regret that you didn't do something sooner? All those negative emotions that all of us as parents go through once we have our aha moment and we realize what's going on and the broken system and what our child should have been getting that they're not getting and frustration and just overwhelmed on how am I going to get this for my child? Maybe even a lack of hope or hopelessness or completely just sometimes it's just shock and overwhelm. Wow, I can't believe this is really the state of our educational system today. So it could be any and all of those emotions that parents of special needs children go through in preparing for our IEP meetings, that they're really very challenging to manage those emotions. So once you become self-aware and conscious of those emotions, now you can start working with them. But be conscious of what you're feeling, because if your emotions are the ones that if you allow your emotions to drive you and to take over your mind in your IEP meeting, you are never going to win, because emotions cause our minds to go into automatic pilot and then you can't think, you can't remember what you wanted to say, you can't hear anybody talking to you, and you check out. And then guess what happens? They take over and you can't come back with being a collaborative IEP team member, much less step into your power as a leader and as the coach of your IEP team, which I've talked about in the past, how to become the coach of your IEP team. Because once you become the coach of your IEP team, that's when you start winning. So how do we do that? After we are aware of our emotions, we're conscious of them, we're knowing when we're in the meeting, you know, okay, I'm feeling anger, I'm going to be aware of that and I'm going to stay in control and I'm going to be, how we be in control is we be prepared for that meeting. So we feel secure and safe by our preparation. Okay, preparation is the key. So in managing our mind and feeling safe, we need to understand that we are dealing with people, we are dealing with human beings in that IEP meeting. All those people that we might be looking at as our enemy or someone who is working against us or someone who is caught in the educational system, but even though they might want to help us, but they're caught in that system with the gag order on them, no matter where that person is coming from, it doesn't really matter. What does matter is that we need to align ourselves with the current system that we're dealing with. Because once you align yourself with that system and you know how to win the game, you know how to play the game, then you're going to win. We're never going to be able to fight and win the system, because the system is the bureaucratic institution. And we can't fight that, you guys. It's always going to be the bureaucratic institution. That's what is. So when we align ourselves with that system, then we know the rules of the game and we're smarter than them and we beat them at their own game, because we're playing the same game as them. Okay, so fighting and arguing and blaming and pointing fingers, that's going to get you nowhere. Because fighting only creates more separation between you and them. That's all fighting does. So there's already a big, you know, crevice, a big wall, okay, that there's us and there's them and it's us against them. They set it up that way. The law sets it up that way, because the law really gives us all the rights. And so it sets them up to fight us, because we have all the rights. The problem is that parents don't know that and they don't know how to implement their rights and they don't know how to use their rights, because they don't even know what their rights are most of the time. So of course, educating yourself and learning your rights is, you know, the next couple steps down the road. But fighting will only create a bigger separation in the already system that's set up to be us against them. We want to eliminate that. We want to create collaboration and a team attitude, a team, a collaborative team, a cohesive team, a team that wants to see your child make progress, a team that wants to feel happy and wants to celebrate when your child progresses. Because most of these people, you guys, they became educators, they became service providers, because they wanted to help kids in special ed. That is at the core of their heart, why they went into education, special education, speech and language pathology, occupational therapy, psychology, whatever it might be. That was their first intent when they went into that. And then they got corrupted by the system. They turned, it's a toxic system, so it tainted them. And then they might have become, you know, one of them, okay? But if you elicit that original, you know, compassionate place of where they originally came to, you can get to that place. I've been there, I've gotten there. This is what I do. I create a collaborative IEP team. Now, it takes a while to get there, but my point is, is that the other way is only going to hurt you in winning what you want. It's not going to get you what you want, because when you're fighting with them and you're always arguing and you're always pointing out everything that's still wrong and always blaming them and pointing the finger at them, they are going to fight you even more. All it causes is more dissension, more arguing and more your enemies. Your enemies and you're not working together for a common goal, which is your child. You want to get to the place where everybody's working together for the common goal, which is your child. So again, going back to, these are human beings, these are staff members that are caught in a bad system. They're just people, good, a lot of them are good people that are caught in a bad system, the bureaucratic system of the school district. So when you start looking at it that way, you can start controlling those emotions. You can start not letting those emotions rule you and you start ruling your emotions. Okay, so so the other thing is, you need to know that, always have in the back of your mind, that you're going to anticipate the resistance that you're going to encounter. So we already know, right? I've always already talked about the no is always going to come and it's the formality. It's the first thing that you're going to hear is the no. So the resistance, we're going to anticipate. Here comes the no. When you make a request, it's typically first a no. Or it's an argument, or it's excuses, or whatever their response is going to be, but it's certainly not going to be an immediate yes, okay? So just anticipate that. That's going to happen. So why get upset about it? Why get mad when you get the PWN that says no? Why get upset when they start arguing with you or giving you excuses or giving you a bunch of BS in an IEP meeting, right? Just anticipate it. Here it comes, here it comes. And then you aren't then vulnerable to having anger rise up in you and then you lose your mind and you go into automatic pilot and then you start losing, okay? It's also a tactic they use against you. They know that we're parents and we're emotional. So they like, let's get her emotional, then she's going to get off her game and then we're going to get a bunch of stuff past her, okay? So you have to be smarter than them and this is how you be smarter than them. This is how I am smarter than them in every meeting, because I can predict and anticipate each move they're going to make, the next move they're going to make, that, you know, this person's going to say this and that person's going to do that. And this is the person that is really, you know, corrupt and is always going to fight. This person over here, they're going to, we'll be able to get them on our side and they're going to work with us, but they're going to have to pretend that they're not, because they have to play that game, that they're not really working with parents. So it's a game and that's what you always have to keep in the back of your head. And you smile and you be professional and you be respectful and you play the game better than them. And that's how we start winning at our IEP meetings. Now, the other thing is, is that once you anticipate the resistance that it's coming and we're going to encounter it, that we are going to start always working to compromise on the middle ground. So you're never going to win every single thing that you want. It's just not going to happen. Even if you hire an attorney, an attorney is not going to come in and win every single thing that you want. That's not reality. You're going to win certain things and certain things you're going to lose. So, but what I do is I make sure that those things aren't going to be a complete loss, but there's going to be some kind of a compromise. So maybe, you know, we won't get exactly what we want, but there's somewhere in the middle where the child's needs are going to get met and yet you're still working with the district where they'll be willing to compromise and at least come and meet somewhere in the middle. That's reasonable. So don't just stick to your guns and say, no, I want this and I want it this way and I want it at this time and I want it on this day. No, you kind of be open to compromise and working with them, to collaborate them, to meet the needs of your child. And your child is always the centerpiece and is always the, what we focus on, meeting the needs of your child. It's not about power plays. It's not about getting back at them. It's not about winning the argument. It's about meeting the needs of your child. And when you keep your mind focused on that, you know, it might not be exactly what you thought it was going to look like, but if it's going to meet the needs of your child, then that's great. That's cool. You got, that's a win. That is a win, when you can meet the needs of your child. So just remember that they're always going to fight to keep the power and control. That's what bureaucrats do. They fight to keep the power and control. But when you use these kinds of strategies, then you're going to really be the one that has the power and control, because you're going to win when you use these kinds of strategies. Okay, so then, you know, I did, at my last Facebook Live, I went through specific points of preparation for the meeting and this is actually action-taking things. That other stuff is how to manage our mind and emotions. So I'm just going to briefly touch on those preparation things that every parent should always do prior to every IEP meeting. And so that would be that the first thing you're going to do is you're going to send an email to your program specialist and that email is going to be your notice to tape record. You always have to tape records and the notice 24 hours prior to the meeting, telling them you're going to tape record. And in that same email, you're going to ask for at least a two-hour timeframe. You never want to attend an IEP that's not at least two hours. And if you have an assessment coming in, then you have the right to ask for more than two hours. You have the right to ask for three hours. I've had IEPs that go four hours, but they don't have to legally give you three or four hours, but you can certainly ask. You can always ask. You can ask for anything, you know, and then they're going to say no, and then you're going to compromise and you're going to meet in the middle and then everybody's happy. So, but you should always ask for two hours, because if you don't ask for two hours, they're going to give you one hour or 45 minutes sometimes, right? So, and then you're going to confirm that all your IEP participants are going to be there at the meeting. You're going to say, I am confirming that all of my IEP team members are going to be in attendance at the meeting for the entire meeting. I don't want anyone being excused. I don't want anyone leaving early. I expect them to be there for the entire meeting. And you're going to request a draft of your IEP. If it's an annual coming up, you always request that draft for the meeting. And if there are any assessments that are going to be reviewed, you ask for a copy of that assessment report prior to the meeting, so you can prepare. Number two, you are going to expect to receive your notice of meeting. That is the IEP invitation. It's called NOM, which is the acronym for Notice of Meeting. They are going to send that to you. Best practices is that you parents get it at least two weeks prior to the meeting. One week is no later than one week prior. It really should be two weeks prior to the meeting. And in that notice of meeting, they're going to list out all the participants and you make sure that every one of your participants are listed on that notice of meeting, because if they're checked and it says they're coming and you sign that and return that, they are held liable to make sure that every single one of those people are in attendance at that meeting. Because if you go to that meeting and they're not there, they violated your parent right to send you an excusal form, asking you, Mrs. Smith, I'm sorry, but the speech and language pathologist isn't available for the meeting, you know, we did have her on the notice of meeting, but she's not available. Are you willing to excuse her? And then you have the right to say, no, I'm not willing to excuse her. I need my speech path at my IEP. And so let's reconvene, let's reschedule and tell my speech path can be there and all my team members can be there. And guess what's probably going to happen? They're going to say, oh, she worked it out and she'll be able to be there, okay? The same goes for when you're at a meeting. If someone says, I have to leave early. So this is what really burns my butt, okay, is when we go to a meeting and it had on the notice of meeting, everybody's going to be there. And then they say at the beginning of the meeting, how is everybody's calendar today? Does anyone have to leave the meeting early? Well, no, no one's leaving early, because you weren't informed prior to the meeting that someone was going to leave early. So you're not going to give permission for anyone to leave early, because you weren't informed prior to the meeting, okay? They have to give you an excusal form and you have to agree to someone leaving early or someone not being there, okay? So when they, and then someone says, oh, yes, I do. I have to leave early. Well, I'm sorry, but I wasn't informed that you were going to have to leave early to my meeting today. Maybe we better reconvene to where, when everyone can be here for the entire meeting. That's why that email I told you about to send in the very beginning, when you make that statement right off the bat, when you're going to start scheduling a meeting is, I anticipate all my IEP team participants to be there for the entire meeting. That's telling them right there, you're not going to excuse anybody, okay? So then what happens when that happens? When you say, and when they say, oh, yes, I have to leave early and you say, well, I'm sorry, I wasn't informed that someone had to leave early to the meeting. They were identified on my notice of meeting that they were going to be in attendance. Maybe we better reschedule and/or we'll have to have a continuation meeting when they can come back and finish up with that person that asked to leave early. Then all of a sudden, they don't have to leave early anymore. So when you start implementing your parent rights, they start coming into line, okay? So then number three is, I already talked about an excusal form. It's the law. It's your parent right for you to receive an excusal form. If they don't give it to you, that's a violation of your parent rights. Number four is your parent agenda and your parent statement. So you prepare your parent agenda and you write your parent's statement, which is your parent concerns and priority statement. And I've talked about that lots of times, so I'm not going to go into that tonight. But if you want to learn more about that, all of my videos are posted on my YouTube channel. So it's Valerie Aprahanian Advocates for Angels YouTube. And every single video that I've done for a town hall or a Facebook Live, and there's even some other webinars and question and answer videos on there. So you'll be able to find information about all the stuff that I talk about. Okay, and then number five is take a leadership role, which is practice your requests and your concerns. So if by taking a leadership role, you're going to be prepared to talk about what you're requesting, why you're requesting it, giving your evidence of why you're requesting it and why you think your child needs it, having your questions ready to go. How are you going to say that? How are you going to present your position on why you're asking for this? Why you're disagreeing with something? Why you have a concern about something? A lot of times at a meeting, we get nervous and sometimes you forget stuff you want to say. And so when you practice and it prepares you and it really helps so that you can present yourself intelligently and organized and your thoughts are all ready to go, because you've already prepared yourself, okay? And you're taking a leadership role by being able to talk their talk and be prepared to have a conversation. And number six is schedule your continuation meeting if necessary. So if you go through your two hours or your three hours and they didn't complete the meeting, then I always ask, right there at the meeting, let's schedule the next meeting right here, right now, while we all have our calendars here. And that way, you don't have to have this whole horrific system that they do. They send out, you know, email after email after, and people say, I can't do that day, but I could do that day. And then, you know, when you're dealing with 12, 15 people in an IEP team and you try to calendar a meeting outside of an IEP, when people don't have their calendars, it's a nightmare. So I always request to calendar at the meeting to reconvene and don't let them reconvene past 30 days. They can't do that. That's a delay. That's a delay tactic. If they're going to reconvene, I ask for, okay, great, when can we reconvene? Within the next two weeks, within the next two weeks. Because if you have, what if you have two or three continuation meetings? That's going to take you three months to get your meeting done. That's ridiculous. That's delay tactics. So they've got to reconvene your meeting and get this done. And so it needs to be, the continuation meeting needs to be, you know, a reasonable timeframe. And then seven is, of course, don't sign your IEP at the meeting. You don't have to sign your IEP at the meeting. Don't let them coerce you into it. Don't let them tell you have to. Don't let them tell you in order for us to implement everything, we have to have your signature. Of course, they have to have your signature if you want it implemented. That's a given. You have the right to take home your IEP and read it in the comfort of your own home when you're not stressed out, when you're not overwhelmed, after you just had a two or three hour IEP meeting and then you're expected to sign it. How can you sign something unless you review it at length? Look it over very carefully. Make sure it says everything you want it to say. Make sure they included everything and documented everything properly. And then if you agree to your IEP, you're going to sign it. And I talked about the different options to sign your IEP meeting. If you sign it fully and full consent, which would be 1A. 1B would be signing it in partial consent with exception. And then you would write your exceptions, which would be a partial agreement statement. So those are the options for signing IEP. And then those are the main tips to prepare and to hold and conduct a successful IEP meeting under parent rights, okay? So that's my training and coaching tonight, parents. So, you know, before we, to start taking questions, I want to also remind you that the advocacy roundtable, the next one is coming up on November 17th. It's going to be Rich Isaacs, who's a special education attorney. And we're going to be talking about, you know, the state of what we're in today in California and also it's going to be very relevant to other states across the nation and what attorneys are recommending. And, you know, one tip I'll give you, a kind of a precursor, a preview of what we're going to talk about. So, you know, parents are really anxious to, you know, get everything done right now. Well, most attorneys are saying that, you know, if you write a compliance complaint now or if you want to file a hearing now, or if you want to take any kind of, you know, big kind of advocacy action now, it's really not a smart thing to do, because we're not done in virtual schooling. We're not done. So if you write a compliance complaint now and say, I want everything made up from before or here's all the stuff they did wrong, you're just going to have to turn around and write it again, because what if we stay in this situation for another six months? Then you're going to have a whole other six months of stuff that you want, that you're going to have to write another complaint about, or you're going to have to file for another hearing on. So until you know the full extent of what you want to ask for, it's really best to wait until we're getting more close to opening schools up. So that's, you know, a little tip there, a preview of what legal advice is from attorneys of looking at how to work with school districts right now. But also, it's, you know, continuing to document, 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 get your evidence. Don't stop documenting. That's your evidence. That's your paper trail. That is what you're going to use to prove that they haven't done what they should be doing, that children are struggling, that children don't have access to an education, behaviors, whatever's going on with your child is done through documentation and videotaping. Videotaping is the strongest evidence that any parent could ever do. Just be very careful that you do not videotape the class, any other kids or the teacher, because then it won't be admissible, because we're not allowed to videotape any kids or the teacher. So that's it, guys. So does anybody have a question?
Oh, hi Valerie.
Hi Alice. Hi Hala.
Oh, it's Hala. Hala. I have a quick question. So we're supposed to, I already signed the FBA and SCA assessment for my son and they got back to me and said, this assessment needs to be done in a classroom setting. So for now, it's not, we can't do it. And I know on Facebook, I asked that question and you mentioned how it can be done. So how do I go about with, you know, responding to their email?
I have lots of kids getting this asked. Assessments are being done in person now. So there's no reason why.
But they were saying. But isn't FBA supposed to, like, look at the, isn't the FBA supposed to look at the behavior in the classroom setting?
So I had, I just had one of my clients that I'm, she, I'm actually her advocate. The non-public agency assessed the child in the home and they were. And, uh, they, they were awarded a non-public agency behavior aid through that assessment being done in the home. So the, the, our home is, is the classroom now. That's the classroom, the home. So, uh, by denying an assessment, they're breaking the law. They can't deny an assessment. They have to do the assessment. So it's not true.
Okay. I mean, we just, we also did, um, IEEs and they are coming on Zoom and observing my son. So you can observe, you know, through Zoom. You don't, I mean, he doesn't have to be in the class because this is his class now. It's distance learning. So I found it, you know, okay. So I, I, I will.
They have to do the assessments that they are breaking the law. Assessments were not waived. They know it and they have to do the assessment. Yeah, that's a, that's a
Okay.
delay tactic and that is absolutely wrong.
So is the FBA and SKEA assessment two separate assessments or they're two in one?
They're two separate assessments. An FBA is a functional behavioral assessment done by a psychologist or a BCBA. And the, um, SKEA assessment is, um, a, an assessment for an aide that, uh, is, can be done by a teacher, a program specialist or, um, another person, but it's not a specific, it's not a BCBA. It's not a
Okay.
even a psych. It's usually the, uh, it's a, it's a, um, they ask questions. They, they have the teachers answer questions. They have aides answer questions. They have, they just, they give questionnaires to people who work with the child. And then, um, uh, they'll have the program specialist or some other admin come in and observe the child in the classroom. And then they'll, uh, um, then give their recommendations.
Okay. Cause I'm serving as the one-on-one for my son currently and he needs, he has a SKEA assessment plan. So that they could sit easy do through Zoom, the SKEA assessment.
They have to do assessments.
Okay.
Just remember, the key is, is that the home is the classroom now. That's the least restrictive environment. That, that's what everybody's in. The home is the classroom. And, and assessments have not been waived. So what are they doing? Telling parents that they can't do assessments until they go back to school. That's a.
What do you, how do you respond to that then?
The, the, uh, uh, assessments have not been waived. School districts are obligated, obligated to provide assessments. My son, uh, the, the classroom is, the home environment is my son's classroom. I'm requesting for the aides to be conducted. And you keep them all, uh, uh, accountable to the timelines. Fifteen days for the assessment plans? Do you have, you signed assessment plans for both of those already, right?
Um, so for my, 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 one of the boys, I assigned the assess, I signed the assessment, but for the other one, they went over the fifteen days. I reached out to them and that's when they got back to me and said, we're not doing it currently. So they didn't even provide me an assessment plan for my other son.
Okay. So with, with, with the son that they, you did write an assessment plan, that's a violation of failing to conduct the assessment after an assessment plan was signed. For your son that they didn't offer you an assessment plan, that is failure to, to provide an assessment plan within fifteen days.
Okay.
Nothing's been waived by IEE. Everything's still in place.
Okay. I'll reach out to them. Oh, God. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Liz.
Hello.
So the program specialists, I don't know if you saw the email, the program specialist forwarded an email from the auditory agency that's gonna be doing the IEE. And, um, they sent an email to the Lori and then Lori, uh, they, they asked for, uh, they said they received the contract to do the IEE. And they, uh, they asked for, uh, all kinds of, they asked for an IEP, they asked for a psychological report. They asked for all the, the, a list of items. And Lori, in turn, she provided everything for them. She has all these attachments. So I was just wondering if, and then they, she asked, you know, we'd like to get in touch with the parent. Can you give us contact information? And of course she did. And so I'm just wondering for Chris, can Chris do that and ask Lori to have everything sent to her? And then they have to provide it to her?
Yes, but remember, um, Liz, we talked about, um, the problem is, is that, um, Dr. Davidson likes things presented to her in a certain way. And she's not gonna get it that way from the school district.
Got it.
Got it. That's the problem. Yes. So the typical procedure, when you have an IEE done, is the IEE provider asks the district, send me the kids' records. And they get the records from district. But certain, um, I E providers, like Dr. Davidson's one of them, Dr. Mitch Perlman's another one. They say, I'm not taking those stupid records from the school district because they're a mess. They are not organized. They have two thousand four and the next IP meeting's two thousand twenty. And then they have an assessment stuck in the middle with an attendance log. So it's completely a mess. Okay? So, so, and when you go back, you know, three, four, five years, this takes hours. When I get kids' cumes, which are sometimes this big, it takes me literally hours and hours and hours. I lay it out on the floor. I have to, sometimes it'll be a half of an IEP and then, and then nothing. And then I'll find the other half of an IEP and another whole records, like another electronic records or another a hundred pages down in the file. I mean, this is how they come. That, it's, it's almost like they take the records and they throw them up in the air and then they put them back in the box and send to me. That, that's how it, it seems like most sometimes when I get the hard copies. Now, the, um, the electronic copies, they're not quite that bad because it'll be an entire document, but they're not in any kind of order whatsoever.
Right, right.
That's why Dr. Davidson says, uh, she wants it in chronological order. She wants, she wants, you know, how, she gives you a whole list of how she wants it.
Okay.
And that, and that's what she requires because she's not gonna take four hours to organize the records from the school district.
Okay. So then should I, um, uh, so when I get the digital copy, you said you were gonna send it to me. Am I going to, I will print everything or what? How?
Is that what you're, you'll have to print everything?
Okay.
Now, the other thing you could do, Liz, is you could ask the district to send you the hard copies and then you organize it and take that to Dr. Davidson. You could do it that way.
Okay. And can I say, um, that, that we're gonna be, that I contacted Dr. Davidson. She's gonna be doing the IEE and she's requesting his file. And so, um, then it can, but I would like it to be sent to me, then I can put it in order and then give it to her. Can I do that?
Yes.
Um, because remember yesterday you said that if I've asked for it once already, they may not, they might deny me.
Yes. Yes, yes. This is what I would do, uh, Liz, just so you don't run into trouble because knowing them, they're gonna say, no, you can't do that. If Dr. Davidson wants it, she can ask for it. We're not gonna give it to you to give to her. That, I know them and that's what they're gonna say. So what I would do is I would call Chris and I would say, um, Dr. Davidson, you know, I can get the electronic copies, but then I'm gonna have to print everything out. And these, this is, you know, could be a thousand, two thousand pages.
Yeah.
So, uh, you could say, um, so you, can you please request that the district, um, the, the, the hard copy?
Yeah.
And tell them that I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick it up and I'm gonna take it to you. Because then you can take it home, organize it and take it to them. And, and she can write them the email saying, uh, I need the hard copy and, um, and Mrs. Beal is going to pick it up.
Got it.
That's what I would do. See, this is what I'm talking about, being smarter than them, you guys. This is how you have to think, like this. It's a perfect example. And then you won.
Yes.
Cause I know them. I've seen them do it before. Yeah, um, because this is what they do too. So when an I E provider wants the records, do you think they send them the entire Cume file? No, no. First of all, what they'll do is they don't send it at all. And the I E provider has to ask and ask and repeatedly ask. And then they end up getting it late. And so then the I E provider doesn't go through the whole thing and add it to the history. And then you have, you don't, you don't have as good of a report as you could have had if they had gotten the, and sometimes I didn't find out because I would have said, why didn't you tell me? I would have made sure you got it, right? So, so that's why as parents, we always have to be, is this, is this going good? Is that going good? Because the school district isn't gonna make sure that anything goes good. So it's our, that's why, why we have to oversee everything, right? So they either do that, they wait till the very end, and they're late getting it to them. And, and then it causes issues with the I E provider or they will send, not send the complete Cume file. They'll, they'll leave IEPs out, they'll leave assessments out. It's not the complete Cume file. And then the I E provider's working off of an incomplete Cume file and they don't have all the information again, which affects the accuracy and completion of the report that you're gonna receive.
Right.
So I, you, I never trust them to give the full Cume file to the I E provider. I always, I always follow up. And I always make sure if they got the whole thing, what do they have and what they don't have, I make sure they get it and I'll send it to them. But this is what parents, now you, you know, that's what you're gonna have to be responsible to do. Because otherwise you're, I, I mean, that, that's, you know, half of an assessment. Your, your I E provider needs to know everything that's happened so that they know what the history of the child is, what the school district has or has not done because that affects how they write their recommendations in their report. I mean, my I E providers will actually say, this child has been severely underserved in the area of occupational therapy, in the area of speech and language, or whatever. Or, you know, it just, it, it affects the way they write their, their assessment.
Okay, Valerie, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have a question?
Hey Valerie, I'm sorry. I had a quick question, um, for our IEE, for Psychoeducational. Do you know if Dr. Davidson is, um, willing to accept, uh, maybe the boys without a mask during the evaluation or?
Yeah, I did talk to her. I talked to her and, um, she said that, um, as long as they are willing to wear the mask, then if they, when they have to take a break, they can go out and take a break and take the mask off and run around and play. But she said that, that they do have to wear a mask. And I said, well, I, I believe that they will, they will put it on, but they're not gonna leave it on for like an hour. Or, you know, but, and she said, well, that's okay. As long as they'll put it on and, and.
Put it on if they're holding an iPad only. Like I've been trying to bribe them, but train them at the same time. But besides that, they really, at this point, I mean, we're getting a medical exemption, uh, form signed from their doctor. Um, so I can't really say they can. So maybe Dr. Davidson just, um, it won't work with.
How long will they wear the mask?
If they're holding an iPad, which I'm bribing them, they, they will, they can wear it maybe fifteen minutes maybe. But that's because of the iPad.
What does holding the iPad mean though? Are they looking at it and engaged in a game?
Oh, um, um, yes, yes. Yes, yes. I like, you know, in order to get the iPad, you have to wear the mask.
So, I'm still not clear. So, so if they have.
Want to see if they can.
What?
Ten, fifteen minutes.
What?
So if they're playing with the iPad, they're, they're willing to wear the mask for like ten, fifteen minutes and then they wanna remove it.
Okay. So they're not gonna be able to be tested with the mask on because they're gonna be engaged in something on the iPad. That's what you're saying.
Yes, yes, yes. So, so is there someone else you recommend?
The only other person I, I know is Dr., um.
Anyone else you recommend?
Dr. Pizarro. Harry Pizarro. But, um,
Okay.
He's my third, my third choice though, and, um, I, uh, I, I, I just don't, I don't feel comfortable. Let, let me, um, you know, work on that for you, Hala, uh, cause I don't think you should, you should, you should use him for your boys. Cause I know your boys and that wouldn't be a good match for you. So, um, let me, let me research some more. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, guys. So, uh, this is our final town hall and I will see you guys on my Monday Facebook lives and on the, uh, round table on the seventeenth. Okay? You guys take care. I'll see you soon.
Thanks.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Valerie.
Goodnight.